Public meeting to order. Danger, but believe it's. When the citizens from the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands for the foundation. I've got individual delivery.
And I'll call the school building committee meeting toward the wrong.
Thank you very much. The only agenda adjustments, this meeting is being recorded and it is remote. Uh participation, so as far as the school committee goes, all votes which only should be one. Should be by roll call. Okay, and in the uh. Right now we have a public comment, anybody from the public, like interest, yes.
Please give a state name, just right over the front. Uh my name is John Galvin, I live at forty one High Street in Whitman. Um the last month or so, uh I started to get involved with the building committee. Uh I spent the last four years on the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, so I was interested in uh. Sharing my experiences and my opinion with that with this group. Uh but why I'm standing here tonight, um that really isn't. For the building committee, but for the purview of the school committee. And that's because of concern um with the way the regional agreement um affects uh section. Five, letter D, which is how debt is applied to all of the different members of the region. Um I'll paraphrase the beginning of uh part two, which basically says that. The ratios of the debt. Uh will be apportioned by the three year rolling average of the enrollment of each town. Uh and that's actually very, very good. Um but as it goes on, the issue that I have uh is it says, and I quote. And the ratio shall not be changed during the period in which such bonds, notes, or other obligations are outstanding. What does that mean? Uh that means that uh at the planned vote in January two thousand twenty five. Um the three year enrollment of every town uh will be locked in thirty years. On what they paid for the school. So let's say Whitman, for instance, because of Whitman, Whitman now is at twenty four percent. So that means year five, year ten, year fifteen, Whitman's gonna pay twenty four percent of this bill. Um and think about it, in year five, Whitman could be at twenty percent, Whitman could be at thirty percent. I mean, right now, there's a lot of demand in Whitman. Um and to me, it just seems that when this language was agreed upon, that the impact of a new. Three hundred and seventy five million dollar school over thirty years. Um probably wasn't considered on how that language or debt um was organized or was for this. Was was documented. Um what do I suggest? Well, there are two towns in this region that belong to another region, that Whitman and Hanson. What is Whitman Hanson? Um what Whitman Hanson does is when the ratios come out on October one. Um Whitman and District Whitman Hanson then uses those percentages uh to actually throughout. Entire assessment period for the next one, plus a number of things. But specifically for the high school, which is really the only building that's across district. They will modify the uh ratio for the payment of the high school debt each year depending upon what that ratio is. Um now, the thing I like about the way your regional agreement is done is that it's a three year rolling average. So any changes are, you know, if there's a big jump in a single year, it's gonna be. You know, it's gonna be reduced a little bit because you've got that three year rolling average. Whitman is generally sixty percent, Hanson is generally forty percent, this year I think it's sixty one point two percent, whatever it is. Um but it 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 changes every year depending upon when. I strongly suggest that the school committee um consider changing and modifying their regional agreement. To take that into consideration. And and honestly, I honestly think you need to do it for the coming spring. For uh all of the town meetings, because you're gonna want this language to address. Because in my opinion, it's gonna be an issue with a lot of towns, especially the bigger towns. Uh that are gonna have a problem when they read this and realize that the towns are locked in. I honestly think there's gonna be a lot of demand, uh it's gonna be a brand new building. There's gonna be towns out there that maybe don't have a lot of enrollment right now, but when they see a brand new school. They're gonna wanna get involved. And maybe Whitman leads the way, maybe Whitman's at thirty percent in ten years. Probably being twenty four percent, it doesn't make sense. So I would ask that you consider that in an upcoming meeting to change your regional agreement.
Thank you. And very much. Well spoken. Right now, we go to uh appointment of uh new 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 Orleans representative. Uh his name is Dustin Rinn, the school committee uh. Who we think will just wanna have Dustin introduce himself and just give a little bit of background.
Hi, I'm Dustin Rinn, I am from New Orleans, I lived in town in New Orleans for thirty five years. I'm a graduate of Central Tech, class two thousand and six, middle of that welding, best shock there is, that's a personal opinion. Anyways, uh I was appointed to represent the town of New Orleans. After our long city member, Bob Moore, with a sign of health concerns, I've been at law for as many years of dedicated service. Only to the town of New Orleans, to this great school. And I look forward to being here and helping in any way that I can and be a good steward for not only the school, but the town of New Orleans. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. That's a former player. Uh kind of total, yes. Oh yeah, well, we won then. Uh right now, I entertain a motion to approve Dustin as the New Orleans School Committee Member.
And with the appointment of the school building committee.
Now make that motion on both.
Uh second vote.
Motion, no, motion Whitman, second coacid. Mr. Chair, just to. Just put a record, this will be for just the school building committee that's the town of New Orleans, as already appointed Dustin. So but it's you, you, the school committee have the power to appoint to the building committee, and that's what this formality does tonight.
I readjust my motion. You know, having one of the classes.
Building.
Whitman, second one, you wanted to coacid, any discussion on that? Okay, all votes in favor, I'll pick a roll call vote since uh not everybody's present. And I don't know if they're on Zoom yet or not, but uh yeah, well, straight down to Abington.
Yes.
Coacid.
Yes.
Hannibal.
Yes.
Hanson, Frank, you on?
No. Uh no, I guess, yes.
Yes.
I can, I can go for myself, I apologize.
Sentuette, Jack.
Um no, 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 Jack.
And Whitman.
Yes.
That is a vote, up on board, Justin. Uh then I contend a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting. Not to read your name, so.
Second.
Motion, Hannibal, second, Whitman. Okay. Uh you roll calls in case, Abington. Adjourn the school committee, adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah. Massit.
Yes.
Hannibal.
Yes.
Okay, Hanson, here, New Orleans, yes. Bob, let me ask, Sentuette, there, Whitman, we have set as a vote, we are adjourned and turned over to the school building committee.
Okay, and for the school building committee, this meeting is being recorded because we have remote participation. All of our votes will be done by roll call. The construction management or risk discussion may be taken out of order in the presentation. Also, there may be votes on site design, votes on up representation. Any public comment on uh what the school building committee? Hey, you're on your line.
We hand this right off to Carl.
Let me minimize. That's also adjourned, okay. Uh thanks very much. Oh yeah. We have a couple of things to share with you tonight and and report on um. Uh as we advance the the options that are that are still in play. And we appreciate your your meeting here on this. Uh sort of uh to help us keep the schedule. And then after um we review the the current status of uh control, the floor plans and particularly the site plans. Um tonight, then we'll um have a little time left to talk about um what's called building delivery uh options too, as time allows. So the uh so as we had before, these are ones left on on our plate to to consider. The the two enrollments, the eight oh five and and nine hundred and. One additional renovation option there, the AR one and the two new construction options. Um the um they're both the linear ones, one with the the uh sort of core facilities uh moved to the center. What we wanna focus on tonight, first of all, is is kind of the site constraints again, and uh. Uh we're gonna need to make some decisions going forward. And we wanna obviously share those with you and share where our, you know, thoughts are at at this point in time. But just to reiterate, what we're trying to accommodate here on the site is not just. A new building or renovated building, but you know, we're particularly focused on a new building. Um and the appropriate car and bus circulation around there, but also the parking. And and remember that little chart that we use to calculate what we think is the sort of optimal parking based on. What's working today and and using that proportion going forward, if we would increase enrollment to eight hundred or ten students. Um there's certain targets we'd wanna hit for parking. And then, you know, today you also accommodate buses on campus here, we wanna think about. Um can we um still fit buses on on the site too with new developments? And then we'll be sharing with you some of the um. Thoughts about how to accommodate athletic fields on the site. Um and you know, obviously, right now you have a a football field surrounded by sort of a track. It's not, it's not um quote unquote um legitimate, it it's um not the uh right dimensions, if not in the right conditions. The right uh materials out there, but there is uh some, you know, version of a track. And and the football field is also serves as the rectangular field for lacrosse and soccer um as well. There's a baseball field um independent of that, and then there's an overlapping softball field on the football field track areas. So initially, that was sort of the way we took the program is saying, let's try and recreate those. Try and improve them if we can, get them to proper dimensions and and not overlapping if we can. Um but we'll show you what some of the implications are there. And then uh we we are still considering um uh some outdoor space that's available to the site um for outdoor learning. Um we think we can accommodate that fairly compactly in some cases, but there's also the the uh. The wetlands and and the uplands that can be used for some of those outdoor learning opportunities. We do know there are gonna be some outbuildings, a greenhouse that we want, a maintenance building, a maintenance garage. Perhaps uh some other good maintenance um storage facilities too. Um and we wanna think about the impact of any proposals on the residential, the adjacent residential property. For the, you know, currently occupied by the district offices. Um so again, just to reiterate the the um uh site constraints in in this map. Um that that we showed before and how um essentially the the building area is defined. You you know, trying to preserve the e- existing school and and some of these outbuildings in in operation. Um if construction is is happening in in this sort of semi circular area here below this. Demarcation line, I guess we'd call it um uh if we can. Uh so that was kind of a starting point, and our civil engineers and our landscape architects have now looked at this in a little more detail. And we also had um coincidentally, timely uh just this afternoon, a meeting with the Hanover Conservation Commission agent. Um which was very helpful and very positive, although we should keep in mind that she's just the agent, she's not the decision maker. She doesn't, you know, act on behalf of uh the commission, that that those are independent people and. We have to formally meet with them at some point. Um um but she did give us some some good feedback that that we can uh share too. But I I wanted to sort of use this as a starting point and then allow our our landscape architect to sort of walk us through a little more detail. Um look at those uh implications and also uh. Uh the the site options and and what some of the ramifications are there. So um David, if you want, I can walk through the slides if you're on and you unmute yourself. David Warner is our landscape architect with the firm of Warner Larson. Uh familiar with the site and all and and familiar with uh many of our other uh school projects too. Uh has done a number of of uh high school um construction projects. So David.
Yeah, sure, Carl, if you wanna uh continue, that way we don't have any sharing glitches. Um so um the previous slide that you showed relative to site constraints, uh what this is doing, this diagram is updating that. Showing um the one hundred foot buffer zone uh adjacent to the bordering vegetated wetland. And then the other lines, those double lines right there are a thirty five and a forty five. Uh as of today, um the agent confirmed that the uh no disturb or no build zone is a twenty five foot offset. There are lines marked in the field um at thirty five feet where there's existing uh woods, you know, existing vegetation. And I guess there's precedent uh in Hanover for um this commission wanting to preserve up to thirty five feet. No disturb if it's existing vegetation. One of the other things that we heard um clearly today, that the areas that are developed already within this buff- buffer zone. Um you know, it's likely those can be redeveloped in kind in similar manner, uh if they're vegetated. Um then they'd be vegetated like a field, for instance, or paved, then then pavement might be okay. But as Carl cautioned, um this is just the agent speaking, and of course, the commissioners um ultimately are the ones who will be making the decision. But it's it's helpful guidance at this point, because uh the site is very uh constrained by these resource areas. And we're going to have to go into this, uh pushing the envelope to. Make sure that we accommodate as much of your program onsite as possible. Um the other thing that we heard today that it's um, this this commission is open to the. Uh possibility of i- filling some wetland, uh if the. And and replication would be at a two to one ratio in the event that, yeah, like there's areas that are tight. Where we already have uh like your baseball outfield comes out to and your agricultural use land that was permitted uh recently comes out to. Y- yes, that corner over there is paved, and that's that's in the thirty five foot or or twenty five foot. Um uh. No, no build zone, up where you were just pointing, and and so that's the type of thing, like if we put the softball field there and it's a permeable grass surface. We would view that as an improved improvement in those conditions.
Hey, uh if I can interrupt, this is Tom Mosley, um I think we're not looking at the latest, and I think I might be able to share the latest.
Okay, I have it up on my screen as well.
Oh, my share, I can't share. Okay, never mind.
Can you share, I have to stop sharing.
It says ho- host is disabled sharing, so I don't think I can.
Get the return to meeting, Carl, where's that? Oh, right there, sorry, there we are. There we are, um and here are all participants. Right?
David, do you wanna give it a shot, or should I?
Yeah, I can give it a shot, let's see. Um. If I am enabled.
It should be, David, all participants, right?
Okay. Okay, is, you're still sharing your screen, I guess that's the reason why I can't share.
There we are.
Okay, now I can. Awesome, thank you.
David?
Okay, here we go, gonna share the screen. So this is the uh diagram that we're looking at um previously, but it's a little bit easier to read. Um with the areas we were just talking about highlighted, we've also um identified, you know, the. Like this is the edge of the existing track here, you can see that's already within that. Um that no build zone, uh as well as over here, uh this corner, that parking lot. So I I wanna preface the diagrams that we're going to show you, because um you know, this is based upon uh detailed survey information. That we've uh recently received about a month ago, and we have introduced um the program areas as dimensional CAD. Uh based uh files, so the track, field, baseball field, softball field, and parking layouts. But we, so without further further ado, I think I'll just start, and I'll show you, we've got basically four different options that we're going to walk through tonight. But they're a work in progress, and the goal today is to be in front of you early, so we can hear if there's any. Nonnegotiables, if there's any real sticking points that we can take into consideration as we develop these in more detail and come back to you with more defined. Options. So um these are preliminary in nature, and we'll show you, this is option one. And this is building off of the um plan that you've seen previously with the track located up by Webster Street. But um let me explain how we've gotten to the layout here, we've started with the uh taking the building. Of the DRA has in CAD and superimposing that on the survey. And looking at these uh no disturb zones and conservatively keeping that out of those those zones with enough space. To transition from the proposed improvements, like the loop road around the back of the building. And the fill that needs to take place, and the stormwater management associated with the runoff here. Um discharging out to the to the surrounding natural areas. Um and we think we can now with the information we've received today, um push this a little bit tighter. Uh but so this is a conservative um first pass, you can see how the bordering.
The bigger one. So thi- this is the larger footprint for nine hundred students too, just to so people in the room understand that.
Right, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Um the bordering vegetated wetland does wrap around and bracket this on both sides. So that is um the constraint that we're we're working with, and it's really giving shape um not only to the building, but also to the rest of the site plan. Uh and then over in in this corner, um we've located a softball field with a two hundred and twenty five foot outfield. Um in a similar manner to what you've seen previously, provided adequate space between the softball field and the baseball field. This baseball field, the dashed outline, is is about the same outfield that you currently have, two hundred and twenty feet. We're showing the, sorry, three hundred and twenty feet, they're showing the solid line, which is three thirty. Um it's not absolute that it has to be that, that's more of an MIAA recommendation. Um and it's something that we think is is flexible and may want to uh to impose on um in order to maximize the utilization of the rest of the site. We are um avoiding coming in uh off of Webster Street at this location. Having um at at least in this plan, you know, we're having this, having had their conversation with McKenzie Engineering. And their familiarity with the site and the wetland resource areas and the work that's been done in this area. Um it does make sense, we think, to continue to utilize the existing curb uh cut on Webster Street. And then the track, uh four hundred meter, four lane track with a six lane straightaway. Is is then pushed over to the east from what you've previously sh- uh seen. And basically, what this plan represents is that the exit drive back out to Webster Street. Would fall on top of the building that you've recently acquired, the residential building where your uh administration offices are now located. So those are the trade offs um that we're seeing in terms of using um, you know, the uh ideal um. You know, field sizes for the three fields, you know, your softball, baseball, and your your track. Um and and that's what you end up with, the, as far as parking count is concerned. The parking you see in the center here, approximately three hundred and fifty spaces. When we know four hundred and twenty six is the goal for the nine hundred student school population. Um we are studying, expanding, you know, putting parking back here. That uh we have to work around in terms of the truck maneuvering, probably another thirty or forty spaces there. So you'd still be a little bit shy of parking, total parking count with this plan. We are showing that um you can fit up to about a hundred spaces over here off of Main Street. But that is, in order for ma- making that useful for the school, a physical connection from there to the school would have to cross. Not only buffer zones, but actual resource areas. Um and uh a boardwalk crossing uh of of a wetland in this situation was discussed with the agent today, and it's not off the table. Um you know, it's it's a uh, the devil's in the details and in terms of how that's designed and how um we can demonstrate that we're not impacting the resource area. Uh but that is, that is a possibility of linking uh this back to the school. Um this is also a place which could, uh this parking area off of Main Street. Could um accommodate your buses and the bus driver, personal vehicles in any of the options that we're about to present to you. Um for point of reference, we are showing um the ideal solar orientation for the ball fields. Which is an east northeast direction from home plate to second base. Your existing uh baseball field, which you can see underneath here, is oriented in a southwesterly direction, so you're accustomed to that. Um orientation, which this new softball field um would also be similar to your existing softball field orientation. But this new baseball field orientation is closer to a a more optimal solar orientation. So I'm going to, I think, just skip through the four options, uh so you can see them um in comparison to each other. Um if there are any clarifying questions as I go, I'd be happy to take them, but I'd like to be able to explain the differences of these um one by one. And then come back and and have more discussion. So option two, what this um was doing was taking option one and saying, well, if we were to eliminate the track. Um how does that allow us to um, what what can we do to accommodate other needs? Uh and certainly, the first thing that we noticed right away was that uh we can keep this. We can keep the softball field and baseball field as shown in the in option one. But are able to uh have the driveway exit out to Webster Street without having to remove this uh this building.
Can I answer for a second, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt you, just with the members here present. This option on the screen now is not, uh is not in your packet, if you're looking for.
It's not off the press.
Yep, this is a very recent uh adjustment, so the option to the EC in your packet, which still includes the trap. Is not what's on the screen, so if you're, if you wanna just, if you focus on the screen, that's that's a bit more current. It doesn't mean the other option two was off the table, but they've updated, they've teased out the absence of a trap. And the ability to keep the baseball and softball field and an exit that does not run straight through Crystal's office and the district office. I knew you were thinking that, again, I knew you were thinking that, Crystal. Okay, sorry, sorry, David.
Thank you for clarifying that, and I do appreciate your flexibility and uh being adaptable to the last minute changes. Um so the other thing here is that we outlined what was, thinking about this as possibly synthetic turf. Since yesterday, during a working group, there was discussion about field materials, among many other things. And the idea that if this primary game field was synthetic turf with the sports lighting like you have now. Um then you would be really be able to maximize the amount of program um that that field can accommodate. Having um. Having football, soccer, lacrosse and field hockey, all, you know, played on a rectangular field. We're also showing a smaller practice area off the end here that could be used concurrently with, say, another, like, if you had football practice going on at the same time as soccer or something like that. So the other scenario here, if you notice, the parking is unchanged from the previous slide, but there's another iteration of this that we're currently working on. It's not presentable, but where the parking would notch around your bleacher and press box area and this field would skinny up a little bit on the width. We're showing a kind of an optimal two hundred and forty foot width, which is two hundred and ten for like a soccer and girls lacrosse. And then an extra fifteen, sorry, ten feet on either side. So, no, fifteen feet, sorry, but, but you can actually tighten those up. So one hundred and eighty for a field width is an absolute minimum, but every high school that we work on, the athletic director and the coaches are always wanting, you know, the soccer to be wider, at least like one ninety-five or even two ten. So we started by showing that, but then what we'll do is we'll show you another version where we're using a more of a minimum width and putting more parking in here on either side. In that scenario, you would be able to get to your four hundred and twenty-six spaces. So there's, there's this iteration, nothing, nothing different over on the Main Street side. So our option number three in this slide deck is, the difference here is basically saying, what if baseball is not provided on this site? Unlike track, the first idea was like, maybe the track is something that doesn't get, doesn't get built, but what if baseball is, is not provided on the site? Because it is a other than the track, it's the second biggest site utilization program element as far as its footprint is concerned. And, and so what this is showing is the softball field moving into that position where the baseball field was shown in the previous two options. And then you could have a practice field over in where the softball field was previously shown. And the track can slide to the west and have a similar exit drive as option number two. And you have adequate parking out front, not even counting the space behind the building. So the space behind the building is definitely going to be, and, and when we come back to you with a more detailed set of options, we'll have more developed. It's going to be, there's a lot of competing needs for the space behind the building besides just the circulation and maneuverability, getting in and out of the shops. There will be storage. There will be, you know, a place we're thinking will accommodate additional parking. And of course, like I mentioned at the beginning, we'll have to set aside space for the stormwater management. This is at the lowest point, the back of the site. Of course, it's going to be filled ground, but then we have to allow space for transitioning that fill grade down to the existing grade and discharging the stormwater in a way that's going to be acceptable to the commission. So we need to allow space for that. So the last option that we have for tonight is taking off kind of where we were on the previous one, but saying, instead of having the driveway coming through the middle between the the ball fields and the track, having it going around the west side of the site, so it avoids the existing building. You can see the existing building here. And the real advantage to that, I think it's quite obvious in that it can be constructed and it can be utilized potentially as construction access. One of these will have to be either the entrance or the exit, but it will be able to be online for the opening of the new school building and accessing the drop-off areas while the existing building is still being abated and demolished. So as opposed to having to build the driveway through the middle in a summer slammer after the existing building is torn down, you have a lot more sequenced, you know, construction scheduling to allow that to function during construction and, and serve the permanent access to the site needs after construction is complete, which is a fairly significant advantage. The softball field would, and, and overlapping practice, say, football field could be located in that space. A baseball field does not fit in this scenario. So that's what, that's what you're giving up. The base, the, the building and the area around it is very similar to what you see in the previous options. And as well as the parking over off of Main Street. Just anecdotally, I'll, I'll point out that we're, we're continuing to show, you know, locations, potential locations for the wastewater treatment plant that we know will need to be located. You know, where it's going to be able to take the effluent from the new building by gravity and pump to the the leaching fields, which will be located up underneath the, the new game field area. We'll also be finding a location for your, your greenhouse that makes sense with the horticultural program and the outdoor uses there. And, and like I said earlier, we'll be studying the storage needs as well. I think, you know, the Connex boxes that you have right now is a very pragmatic storage use and we have an inventory from your facilities team as far as what the various ones are currently used for. And those are very likely going to be, you know, stacked up, you know, along the access drive around the back of the building as well. So that concludes our site diagrams and Carl, I'd like to follow your lead and opening that up to any discussion.
Sure. I think it's appropriate that we are discussing both. Yeah, I want to know, and Sydney Rent Reals that they have both the football field and track even on the right side and then two football fields in the front. That was previously discussed. The football field on the left side or even?
Yeah, you're looking down that way, yeah.
Yeah, yes. We talked about that. They, they haven't developed it yet, but it is an option that we're thinking about, particularly if, if, if we're willing to forego the track and have a foot, just a football field that can fit on the left-hand side. Let's call it the right side. It's sort of west, I guess. Trying to get the football field and surrounding track over there is very tight fitted. It impacts both the wetland up by Webster Street and the wetlands down by, I, I can't. Oh, I can use my pointer too. Th- this one here, i- if we were to take this oval, it comes all the way down here and, and impacts these wetlands as well as that one. So it's a, a very tight fit to get the track and the football field there, but the football field could fit there. If, if that's the trade-off and put the, the baseball and or softball in the so-called front yard along Webster Street. So we are looking at that, that option.
Are you looking at the effluent for packing?
That, the piece across.
Right there.
Yeah. We did a quick study there, Bob. It, it's, it's feasible, I guess, and, and but it's, it's very expensive on a, if you think of it per car space, I guess, because it's ledge, it's a wetland crossing. It's kind of a single, like a dead end too.
Yeah.
A single loaded is all that we can fit there. So and, and today the, the conservation agent wasn't too encouraging to explore that area either necessarily because it is treat area. One of the things we could say in all these other arguments is that we're not cutting down any more trees. We're trying to develop everything in what's already developed area.
You know, which are, oh, big traffic, where trees are renewable.
Yeah.
They're a crock.
But now that we've paved it for parking about. Don't even miss a word.
Don't even go there. That's just our only usable.
Yeah.
High and dry land.
Yes.
And main. Main Street, we're going to have issues.
Yes.
With neighbors, exiting onto that main, onto Main Street.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's my question to others, is that we ought, the options of crossing over the Main Street area, like you said, the fields were on the left side.
Yeah.
If they go down into that wetlands, could we do the two for one and put over on the other side?
Yeah, we.
Should I be negotiating with the conservation?
If we're.
Crossing for the small area that we.
Yeah, we have to cross this wetland here.
Yeah.
And, and we'd also, depending on what's happening here, if the softball were here, for instance, we're starting cutting up the tips of these wetlands too.
Yeah.
We're getting close to sort of the maximum allowable, but there is area in here to replicate between these two wetlands.
Right.
That makes a lot of sense.
You can do the.
Yes, two for one replication.
Two for one replication on that.
But that parking, i- if that were parking, we know there's issues with the neighbors and all, but it's also a long way from the school.
It is.
For, for that, it, it might work as a, a practice area for a field. It, it's nothing legitimate in terms of dimensions, but it, it would be a grass area that you could get a rectangle in there. You know, that's a hundred and twenty feet wide right there. And as David was pointing out, you know, any rectangular field is legitimately at least a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety feet wide. So it's not going to be, you know, a game field, but i- it, it could be a practice area, in which case you still want a pedestrian access to it and probably even something drivable with a little golf cart or gator or something. So we'd still want a boardwalk or, or equivalent, if, if not a paved road to, to make that connection back to the.
But the rest of the city is still available on that inside there.
It, it is. And again, we, we have to caution that, you know, our conversation today was just with the agent, not with the commission. And, and we also realize that if we think about the schedule, we're really not officially going to be in front of the conservation commission until like the spring of twenty twenty-five. So who knows who the agent's going to be at that time? Who knows who the commission members are going to be at that time? They could change and turn over. So we have to be a little cautious in, in that regard, but there, there are some other options there.
And we say a long way from the school.
Yeah.
How far is a long way?
Um, let's see, if we can quickly scale then.
So that's two forty.
That's, that's two forty. It's probably a thousand feet. Uh, what's that?
A long way to go out to.
Quarter mile.
I feel like. Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying that.
It's probably a thousand feet or so.
How expensive would it be to have a tiered parking garage? Does it?
Yeah.
I mean, is it going to just blow the budget right out of the window?
Our rule of thumb in the past has been that i- if you think of the cost per car of, on a paved parking lot versus the cost per car in a structured parking, it's ten times as expensive.
It's all down there. We've cut it down.
And. We, we haven't done many either, but there's, there's also sort of security, safety perceptions at least with parking garages. People just don't feel safe sometimes, depending, you know? Even if, you know, it's your teachers, it's not students, but still, yeah.
Got a lot of night programs to hold.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, thank you. The other thing I just want to mention in terms of when, when our energy gets back to looking at like parking spaces and numbers. On one of the earlier slides, when, when the team is coming up with these numbers, there are a couple of assumptions that are in there and, and it's worthy of, it's worthy of us coming back to the full committee with some, some further justification. What I mean is we, we are adding up, we know we need a parking spot for every staff person and we can estimate how many staff we'd need in a larger school with more kids. That seems very logical. And we know we need visitor spots and those visitor spots have grown in proportion to what we have now. But the area with the most flexibility we could at least look into administratively is how many parking spaces should a high school set aside for its students who have licenses? What we did was we looked at what the current situation is now or maybe a month ago and, and said, okay, how many spots do we have for kids right now? And where are they from? Are they the senior class? Are they the junior class? Do all seniors drive? Do all kids have a car? So if you look back at that slide at any point to look at how we built those numbers, the, the three hundred and eighty-four for eight, for the eight oh five kids or the, or the four twenty-six, I just want to point out to you that one of the variables is we made an estimation that two-thirds of the seniors would have a parking.
Tom, big three.
Yeah.
So they're not numbered, I'm sorry.
I think where I'm going with this is that if we have to, if, if we're trying to make something fit and you're noticing a gap in parking and there's going to be something that's going to shrink, it's probably in that area and us having to look honestly and candidly and say, how many parking spaces would we, could we live with setting aside for students? And I'll just leave it at that, just, just to point that factor out.
Coincidentally too, Tom, the, you notice in that chart too, if you're looking at it, the, the bus parking, a rough estimate there is that the maneuvering and parking spaces for buses take itself four times as much as a car. And so i- it's almost equivalent. If you were to delete the junior parking, it, it allows you to park buses in the same amount of pavement, basically. That's the trade-off.
And that is another factor up here for consideration. Whatever site decisions we make might trigger us having a few years to figure out, you know, we've agreed to a site that can't accommodate our own buses or can only accommodate so many school vehicles. So there will have to be some subtraction there as well, but more for consideration certainly would want to give you refined ideas in that area by asking around, by asking our project team when they've had high schools with other compact sites. Just though we are, we're wide-eyed about, we were clear on what we're, what we're giving up or what we're having to scale that. But that's what we'll, so those parking numbers are not by regulation. They're not, no one's telling us those are the numbers. We're filling the bucket with one spot for every staff person, visitor spots for a variety of reasons, salon, restaurant, other events. And then what's left is mostly for students, but we can't forget our school vehicles. Our smaller school vehicles, the shop vans, et cetera, we would assume right now, we would be earmarking space as David pointed out that, behind the building. So, so it's really about the kids and the buses in terms of making that map work.
Yes, sir.
Now this elevated, the, the part of the land is elevated, it's.
The upland there, yeah.
Yeah. If you got into a crunch for parking in the future, everything costs more in the future, I get that, but is it possible to make it more parking in the future?
It, it, it is possible and again, depending on where regulations go in the future. There's a narrow strip of wetlands that would need to be crossed.
Yeah.
We believe that's, you know, feasible. It's not as a right. You still have to go through the process to get approval to do that, but you could put a bridge across a culvert that still allows the water to flow under it. So you, you minimize the impact on the wetlands. And, and there are areas there that are, you know, far enough away from the buffer zone that you could pave them, but to get them flat or leave it close to flat takes some work and expense, but there is some, some room there for future expansion.
Or these school buses could be put there.
That, that, that's where it gets really tough. They don't have the maneuvering room to, to pull in and out. You certainly don't want to back out of them or you know, in that kind of a configuration. So we're not sure you could get school buses up there. Yeah.
Teachers, teachers, vehicles, I think.
Cars with parking brakes or a helipad. If you're flattered on.
Yeah. I'm saying, you know, my. Which is the only, it's the only extra flex space. It looks like it's. The idea of the drive, the exit driveway going right through the building we just bought, that's like.
We, we have that. We, we knew that would get your attention.
Yeah. But. To join this point of view, future is that if you didn't get it with the conservation, we'd be willing to pay the EDP and have areas there to get availability crossover wetlands to do for justified reason. And that has happened in the past. And but it's like, you know, I agree with Mr. Hayward here about the spot on the file left there going off the Main Street. I think the neighbors will be, be more enticed to have it as a, in your practice facility than it would be a parking lot with another driveway, which would make sense to have. They have, they, they don't want a driveway going through there either, right? So that's traffic coming in and out of their areas. So I just think that's spot over there would be best for an access field, which we think if we move the and then I can keep hopping on the field to the left with the track, move some of the wetlands over. Yeah. And then put that over there. And that, there is a practice facility close to the track in there. Everything's kind of like this one here.
The, the, the trade-off too, as we mentioned, moving the softball and baseball field towards Webster Street in essence, trading with the
Yep.
track, football, is that, you know, we have to watch out for batted balls going out on the Webster Street. So we inevitably end up with not just tall fencing, but usually what we. So we inevitably end up with not just tall fences, but usually what we'd see are fishing net like kind of. And and some of those, they can't, they they can't be raised and lowered too.
They could be, they sometimes are taken in, I mean, winters. Good water has those, they go on right on eighteen.
Right.
And they're year round. Yeah, they don't take them, I mean, they're out there, they're.
It becomes an aesthetic, uh, issue somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Um, question, first of all, the other designs, mentioned having, not having a baseball field. What is, what is the actual issue with that, not having a baseball field on site? And because this design here, imagine the exit, you're going to build a red building. On this design, you've got the big red barn on the far side of it. Can't we bring that driveway up around the building to the other side? Not through the Crystal's office.
There there is a driveway there now, um, curb cut at least.
Yeah, okay.
It it's it's a bit tortuous for buses and trucks to make that as a primary way in and out, but. I guess we can look into the feasibility of that, but, um, it 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 also impacts, might impact the the, um, the barn that's there too, but. See if we can thread it through there, Jim, yeah.
Also, just on the other side of that red barn, isn't that a right of way that doesn't get used?
That's a fire round shot, yeah, it's not your.
So would they go up to the corner?
You paint the school buses red and white and then make it.
Yeah.
I guess we're blinking lights on them.
Well, they got them all bad, yeah.
No problem.
Yeah.
So these are some of the 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 kinds of input we'd like though, because the idea is that we want to work on these options in the next couple of weeks here. Come back to you on December fourteenth. With some some other thoughts and and and, um, maybe more better or fewer options. Based on on the input and and kind of finalize the the layout at that point so that we can then give to our cost estimators to proceed with pricing it out.
What is the least horrifying version? By eliminating football, baseball, you know, which which is, if we, or track, you know, it's like you could. That's no luck we're offering. And then parents that are looking to sending their kids to the school are going to go, oh, they they don't even have a football field. Why should I send my kid there?
Those are the value decisions, right, that we want to, you know, we'll we'll participate, but it's it's kind of your call. Now, we we never showed one that didn't have a rectangular field.
Yeah.
And and the rectangle field is is not just football, obviously, it's soccer and lacrosse as well, yes.
And being captain of the track team, you know, listen to that, but I did not come to the school way back when because there were no sports. That was an eighth grade decision, I made many years ago. And but, and I think it's just as important now, that the kids can come here and play and then learn a trade or whatever and. Yeah, we definitely, I don't want to cut any sports as possible, but then we go to the academics.
Well, just to be fair, right, if you didn't have a baseball field, does not mean you don't have a baseball team.
Right.
You you could make arrangements with with, you know, some other, we we don't know exactly. Wh- wh- what the Hanovers, the high schools fields are are like or, you know, what they're.
Although it's been wide that out people stop for years.
And we would take a long term, take a long term arrangement.
Right.
Insist on saying, right, or we would have to find our own land somewhere else that is not reimbursable, purchase and develop.
Yeah. And the same.
Yeah. They would say a little.
Bob, and and the same with the track, you know, you're right, if there wasn't a track on campus, does not mean you don't have a track team. But you, you got to.
And the lack of a track also impacts the phys- the phys ed program.
We don't have a pool, we do have a swim team.
That's right.
There you go, or you don't have a hockey ring.
That's right, we we do go off site for hockey and our co op team. Mr. Chair, thank you, to George's point. Uh, just to clarify, whether it's eight hundred and five students where we end up landing or nine hundred. Neither, the 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 building footprint really has no material impact on the thoughts and decisions this committee will make about the fields out front.
Yeah, our our feeling at this point in time is that the size of the footprint, um, only affects the parking really, not not the, um, inventory of athletic gear.
Okay.
I think can accommodate.
I have a question. Go ahead. Um, Tom, what would it be, how much would it be to run buses off off the. Yet some way are very volatile.
Yeah, that's right, well, I'll actually write and talk.
And run one of the small buses, the first five is to run their buses.
I think what you would see is, uh, it would, it wouldn't be an inconvenience, it would be an increased operating cost.
Yeah, right.
Uh, and and I think that we would have to find, we have to go through the procurement process to purchase real property or to lease real property.
Right.
We'd have to find land that we know is, uh, that has facilities on site because our drivers would have to drive there. We have to know that it's lit and secure and want to feel that if we continue down a path of owning or leasing to own our own buses. Um, so all of those considerations, but if if all of those boxes were checked, that would be a pattern way.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's it, we're staying in the market from, you know, as we get to more and more bus rooms.
How much also, how much would it, how much uproar would it be if we cut this kind of parking down significantly?
I think that's, I think that's worthy of study. I think we have to, I couldn't tell you right now what significantly means. Um, but if if we, I'll just give you a, for instance, if we were to build for eight hundred and five students. And we know that there's some flexibility in that number, so this is, this was my scenario, you build for eight hundred and five. We plan on a five percent bump above that, okay, that's eight hundred and forty-five. So to to, assuming there's a three percent attrition rate, we would take in a freshman class of two hundred and twenty-one. About fifty more than we take now, and we would graduate a class of two hundred and two, which is about fifty more than we do right now. So those numbers matter to me as I try to think about your question, which is, cutting it significantly depends on. Well, what would be the size of our senior class in twenty, in twenty thirty-two? It 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 might be as much as two hundred kids, how many of those kids would drive? Right now, we're told about two thirds of our seniors have spots, that's not scientific, it's just using something. We have to look at that, we have to, we have, I think we have to test those assumptions and say, what would a significant cut be? We're a regional school with a very wide footprint, uh, yes, there are school buses and the state reimburses us for them and, uh. So we have to be, we have to be mindful, there's an interest to drive, but when we're prioritizing the program, the parking, and what we talked about with the site, it all goes into the soup. So, but we're going to study that a bit more, Dan.
I agree, go ahead, Logan.
Um, how many school buses could we park behind the building we just bought? In the backyard of that building, would you make that a parking place for the school buses? Would you put seventeen school buses there?
I'm thinking of seventeen there on a regular basis, you know, conveniently somewhere they could, you know, pull in and pull out, you know, um, you know, easily.
Yeah.
You could probably get half of that number in there.
Okay.
This is, I think, but we'll investigate that, check this, the possibility, we'll look at the other trade offs to it. You know, where on the plane could we get the buses and and how many parking spaces do you lose in in that regard, you know?
When you're considering a parking space for a school bus, do you have to have the thing on asphalt? Or is a permeable surface acceptable? Or does it get into a pain in the ass with plowing it?
Yeah, it generally wanted pays, we also have to pay about drainage.
Yeah, right off, yeah.
Well, because the. Is there a gas or anything else now that's in the soils?
Well, they want on propane.
Yeah.
They they do.
But you have one electric one, they have unplugged it. Was that just a block here?
Block, yes, that's right.
Oh, yes, they're expecting you to be cold tonight.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one more thing? Based on the fact that we might have been a little, and it's good, a little conservative on the road behind this projected school. Would it be possible to make that road behind the school wide enough so buses could park nose to nose?
Yeah.
And still leave enough space for.
Talking about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they, that's that's the idea, you know, in the afternoon, that they would line up nose to nose for pickup.
Nose to tail.
Nose to tail, sorry.
Nose to tail, yeah. So. And with proper security, the buses could be stored there at the conclusion of their route.
Yeah, and, you know, we we could have gates too, if we wanted.
Motion.
Trying to pick away after hours at at either end, you know.
Yeah, it's like wasted space.
Make it a little wider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Police officer would make his hand all over the shit there. You've got to allow.
Well, the police is, I, they have to get out of the car.
Get out of the car and open the gate. They're not going to do it, if you make it electronic, they might do it.
Yeah, well, we we have that in some schools.
Just to drive around.
The sliding gate and with the garage door open.
We need all the ampliations for space.
Yeah.
They might deposit.
I might put that, try and put a puzzle.
Yeah.
No, it's the tail behind like that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that's a great option, but I think, like, my personal opinion, I think we're going to end up with a mosh site transportation. That's going to be the end of the message. Proceed, it's just a space. Because like you said, they they just don't have the same turn rate he says cars or even pickup trucks or vehicles.
Right.
There.
We both see the China school, you know, it's just that buses, they never create them. And they're parked in a cabin, can you?
Yeah, yeah.
They're parked in a cabin, there's a company open. Yeah, yeah, so it's possible these answers.
Also, considering, start with parking and stuff like that, not just the buses, it's like, the shops have trailers. Carpentry have trailers, quarter culture has trailers, and all those things here also have some parking place, so. It it has that access point behind you, it's really maybe that's to see the place where the trailers.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely useful, real estate in the building for a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
Sure, I I noticed that, that, um.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone, how are you? I I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get a word in edgewise tonight, you guys are, uh, you're chatting it up over there. So I I got three things, I'm just going to lay these three things out there and then we, you guys can comment on them. Uh, the first is, I I was looking at that existing district office and I'm thinking to myself, you know, here we are. We've got a carpentry program, we've got an HVAC program, electrical program, yada yada, right? What if we were to remove that building and could we build a new district office over on that property on Main Street? Making that other area a place for parking for school buses or even additional students. Um, and maybe that barn that's there currently becomes a maintenance facility, um, you know, or a garage to do whatever we need it for. Whether it's for maintenance or for school bus repairs or whatever happens to be, so that that's that's item one. Item two, um, we'd all, well, I guess it would go into item one as well, we would, we could just not put a new building up. Just demo it and add the district offices into the new school, giving us that space, so that would be a different option. And then one of the things with the entrance on the plans, I really do think that entrance needs to be over to the left. Not coming through the middle like is proposed on this drawing here. Um, it just seems to me like we're going to have possible traffic flow issues if that bus comes, you know, the way I'm looking at this drawing, do self. And then comes in and then hooks a left to come back around to go right across the front of the building. Um, this is a great plan, I think this is an awesome one that we're currently seeing. But if you back up to the other one, I I I kind of see a problem with that. Um, just some sight of of me looking at it and just something that just stuck out, so just wanted to put it out there for you guys to think about.
Thank you, Robert, I appreciate it.
While we were talking about like a minute ago, we were talking about the fact that we spent a million dollars for this house.
Yeah.
We consider the house or the property at this point, yeah, worth.
It's a million dollar tear down.
I I think I think the house has value, I think we have to maintain it as a, as an asset until we really are pushed. Any district, the district, any district space in this new school building, um, is not reimbursable. So if it's a high school office, the principal, the assistant, that is, that can be factored in. But anything that would be considered central office is not. So then, so so there's a, there's a, there's a baked in savings, there's a baked in savings, what we've done. So, Tom, my personal opinion would be, we have to really be, our back would have to be against the wall and I, we would want to look at the cost trade off. Um, and and so a little adjustment to the track. You know, I I would want, I would want the team to come back and say, look, in order to, in order to avoid, uh, Crystal having an open air office and Jim looking up at the stars. Uh, it's what has to happen. And I, and I, it is a reasonable thing to have the team work on fi- figuring out a way to do that. But look at this drawing on the screen now, this is a drawing where it's okay, it's a little closer to the house. But notice that we haven't been able to fit all of the athletic, uh, program demands that we want.
Yeah.
So there's there's work to be done.
I hear Paul with Tom, I mean, first of all, how how urgent is it to have a track as part of the program? So that's something that MIA is requiring, there must be a requiring, is that just?
No, no, that's our fault.
But on the drawing where the exit road went through the building, it had a track, so by removing the track from that design.
You can, you can save the building. Yeah, that's the direct trade off.
It was option two, I think.
Right there.
Yeah, right there, so.
Save the building by getting rid of the track.
And there's no reason that you need to have a fixed structure around both baseball and softball. Those could be open fields with those temporary outfield, you could probably create, could you create a faux trap that somehow?
Not round or oval?
That's, if you could place an oval somewhere over the baseball and softball fields, assuming there's, you know. Talk about their fences and 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 the idea is a bad one, but if, but if, if we still wanted to provide some sort of oval shaped something, not MIAA stations. Not able to have home track needs, but could serve as the phys ed program.
Yeah, for a second, third.
An old high school, until they built the new high school, had a fifth of a mile track. It wasn't a quarter mile track. We were able to run there until MIAA really evolved, but to, you know, it was a smaller track.
We see that, yeah, it it's considered a jogging track or a use for phys ed. Not necessarily, you know, because it doesn't have the right radii for, you know, competitive running.
Right.
But you could have trade aways for that kind of practice, um, but, um, it's more considered jogging.
Yeah.
Better, yeah, competition.
I just have one more, when you mentioned, somebody mentioned about a treatment plant. Uh, where would the the treatment plant be located?
Well, we we think this one here shows to the right of the building.
Yep.
That might be the treatment plant itself, and then it's pumped back up to the front yard by Webster Street to the field.
How how much would it be if we added in the back? Because I think that was part of the thing that we thought of when we purchased the house, that it had the land behind it. And, uh, if it could go there, well, then then we have to pump it from the school all the way to the house.
We're trying to locate the treatment plant where we could flow by gravity from the building to the treatment plant. And then, you know, for those who understand these systems better than I yet, the the line coming out of the treatment plant is like just slightly bigger than a hose. As opposed to, you know, a twelve inch sewer line or something.
Totally eighteen.
It, yeah.
Because it has an aciator or something.
Yeah, 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 it's basically pumping liquid at that point to the field, and so, um, that's the more economical way to go, if you can. And again, like we said, that real estate behind the building is valuable for a lot of other reasons too, but it could be where the treatment plant ends up as well as parking and. Trailers and storage, comic boxes and and other things, but, uh, you know, the inventory is adding up with what we want to fix back there.
I thought that would be a pretty good place for it to sit in the, on the top of it, so.
I think that the new building we purchased, isn't it, doesn't it have a raised, uh, leach field or something like that?
It does.
Kind of where the driveway could go?
Yeah.
Right, so we have to figure out how to.
Yeah, the thought is that perhaps we end up pumping from that house to the new leach field. And and abandon existing.
But that's a buffer zone for that too as well.
Yeah.
You can't put a leach field in the road.
Right, we, yeah, we would, we would abandon that raised field to get this road through there and utilize the new field. You know, basically have the house tied into the the same new field.
Depending on what just gets sent. If Hannah would just get sentenced.
So it would, you know. That ship's tail will be long.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Yes. Um.
Okay.
I know, I know Bob Melo, Bob Melo mentioned this, this design. It's not, it's not his preference because of the way the road went straight down to the school. But it doesn't feel like that option is available if you've got both baseball and softball fields there. The only way to move is the test for the day or the deals. So how do we go from all of our discussion today, the final, or some sort of final design where we've got. Okay, it sounds like a dig stop possible where we like the road on this side, we like the baseball field, we get this. Leave the building alone. We don't want a track, we want a track.
That, that's our challenge and that's why our consultants are on.
We need a point B, I mean.
Yeah.
We, we now as a committee vote saying no track or vote to say we want two fields or just one field.
Well, I feel prepared to make that decision, but we weren't expecting that tonight.
Okay.
I didn't know what that process would be. I would fear, but no one knew.
Great. We want to lay out these options for you, get into you in advance of the fourteenth meeting. So you have a, a few days at least to digest it, at least individually. And, and then we come together on the fourteenth and try to make that final decision.
Uh, it's also just one thing, we do both fields. Do you want to get two fields, get two fields out of one?
Facing each other.
The baseball field facing out and then the outfield, and so the same outfield there, just scheduling for both. Uh, it's happened in Abington, uh, for years, many years. They used to have velocity field here and then the JP field over there with the two outfield. Two set of fields will be ten feet from each other. You know, different games, whatever.
We have a possible layout for that too. But again, getting everything in with that kind of configuration is the challenge. Track, football field and, and the two fields facing each other. Doesn't lend itself to, to accommodating, uh, the roadways in and out and keeping the house.
Sure, I actually have a question. I, I, I've already covered, um, and I, I apologize. I'm a little bit was, uh, you guys are going to present us with a, uh, a rendering where the football field is more towards that back left corner as, um.
Right, where the roadway is here.
Yeah, so you, so we are going to see that, so we could potentially, like, uh, Bob said, to essentially use that. Those nine, you guys have a conditional parking on Main Street as a practice field. So then we have the fields in the front, you guys are going to provide that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great.
You know, this rendering right there where it's the driveway.
Yep.
You come in. Yeah, and doesn't it sort of follow that right now?
Yeah, that's the existing roadway right now.
Yeah.
Virtually.
For a school bus, don't they drive down there to park or something already?
Yeah.
So it's not a.
This, this one does flow better as Bob Melo mentioned in terms of pickup and drop off through the site. As opposed to the other, a- and it works for that first year of occupancy too, when the existing building is still in your front yard.
Yeah.
And as opposed to having a temporary road or something around the side, but, um. Uh, so th- those are the trade offs we, we consider, but this road is your, basically your existing road.
And the, the neighbor, the, the bots, um, they're used to it already.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, I know we're taking up a lot of time, but it's a lot of good input. And, and like you said, our next steps are to work on these multiple options. Get them to you in advance of our next meeting and, and hopefully we could, um, come to some good census at, at that point in time. We did have a few other things, so we quickly, um, if, if I can share again.
Carl, I might just point out while you're bringing that up. The idea of running a track around baseball and softball, which is an idea that I heard. Um, it's still going to be, uh, you know, a large footprint, uh, even if it's four lanes. Um, and it would be a geometry that's very unusual. Uh, and it would be impossible, I think, to make it exactly four hundred meters. It might be longer actually. Um, so.
Be a jogging track, really.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe. Yeah, maybe we show it as, as a, as a pathway, you know, that isn't necessarily, you know, four lanes per se, but it could be used for PE.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so just a, a development on, on the plans, I, I won't get into the details, but on the two options, the architectural options. Um, NC two, two point zero and two point one. Um, there, there was some discussion about, um, having a single entrance into the building, primary entrance. As opposed to the, these original plans that showed, here's the main school entrance and here's kind of the public entrance. That like this door right next to us, uh, gets you into culinary arts and cosmetology, which still could be secure, but it is separate. Um, the thought was, could we develop something that, that utilizes the main entrance for, for both functions? And so we wanted to share that with you for each option. So for this option, two point zero, where again, the, um, uh, auditorium and gymnasium are at the right hand end of the plan. And, and the student comments cafeterias at this end of the plan. Here, here's how it could work. You, you, we have the main entrance that's used by everyone. Um, there'd be an airlock, a vestibule, then you'd come into what we'd call a public lobby. That's still what the policeman would call a trap. Um, that all the, the, the doors are sort of controlled. You can't go any further into the building. Um, then you, you have basically four or five options from this. You check in if you're a visitor to the school, um, for, for school reasons. You could, you could actually, um, sort of transact business through like a bank teller window. Or come into the office, um, there. Um, obviously for, for students arriving or departing, you, you go straight ahead and those doors could be unlocked, they're arrival time and departure.
That's safe, that's.
It, it is sort of, yeah, yeah. Um, and you go to the left or right to get to the, to the culinary or, um, or cosmetology salon. And we can also locate the school store there too. So with a little bit of an expanded sort of public lobby, one entrance could, could serve it all. And, and then the, um, you know, the plan would, would be modified accordingly. The, the trade off here really is that the administration area that's located at the front door is, is, is reduced. There'd be more a- administration elsewhere distributed in the building, which is okay. And it is a positive thing, but we, you know, we'd want to make sure, you know, we get the principal, we get a conference room. Obviously we want people at the front desk, uh, area there. We'd have to determine, you know, who are the really key people that need to be at the front door and who could be elsewhere in the building. Um, so that's the trade off and that's for the two point, uh, zero option. And then to show you, um, for the, um, two point one option, sorry. Again, this is where, you know, the, the commons and the gym and the, and the auditorium are in the center of the building. Again, we had the notion of a secondary entrance originally, but if we were to try and do the same kind of functionality. You, you'd come into a vestibule, then you'd come into that public lobby, but in this case, um, it stretches off to one side and is kind of long and thin. You, you might think of it as kind of a mall somewhat, but again, it's controlled. But everyone's coming in that same front door. Students would go straight ahead through the commons and, or upstairs. You know, wherever they're going in the building at arrival time. The, the front office would still be here. The school store could still be here and then cosmetology and culinary are basically down, you know, one end of, of a mall. So it functions the same way. It, it does have ramifications in the building. So we put cosmetology and culinary, you know, down at, end of the building. And, and we'd end up with some administration, say, over here in addition to the main office here. Um, a- and on the upper floors as well. So it, it can work that way in, in each option. And, and if that's the, the way you'd like us to go, we can develop these plans then. Um, and these would be the ones we, you know, present, um, in, in two weeks or so, um, and give them to the cost estimators and, and go down that route. Does that make sense to folks?
It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically what they have.
Yes, yeah.
But again, the gym is in the.
Probably still be, I think in the ad rental options, it probably still going to be. I don't know how we would do a public.
Right, right.
For the shop.
This, this one remains the same as, as it is. We, to, to address it here, we'd bring some administration presence to this end of the building. But it's not quite as, as, you know, tidy and organized as this new layout could be. Okay. And, and just to share with you, just quickly back on, on the three dimensional views, we wanted to make sure you understood that, that, um, for the two point O option. Either at eight hundred or nine hundred, it is a three story built, a partial three story building. The center portion of the building is three stories high. And, and, and the two wings, you might say, uh, in this one are two stories high. And here's what it would look like, you know, from, from Webster Street. And again, depending on what's in the front yard, it's athletic facilities, these goalposts may go away. But, um, this, this does, this person is standing basically on the sidewalk at Webster, so just to give you the scale. Of how, you know, what a three story building looks like, two stories on the side. The, the architectural point we'd like to make is just to let you know that because of the distance. We, we want the building still to have some presence from the street. We don't want it to get lost. Um, we, we would see a sort of vertical element being, um, emphasized there at the entrance. Whether it's all glass or it could be a solid tower, a stair tower or something. But there's a vertical element that, and, and a bit more glass than the rest of the building has. Just to, to be the, sort of the announcement of, of the entrance. And, and this notch would go away. Um, there's still the notch there, it probably becomes solid, not glass, but, um, and, and typed up too. Um, so it, it becomes clear that, that the, the front entrance. Uh, and then for, for the two point one option. Here's, a- again, it, it, it has a three story portion too. In this case, it's on one wing. Um, and the two story portion is, is the center and, and left hand end of, of the plan. And here we're suggesting as a way to sort of tie the, the building together and emphasize the center. There might be more of a curving wall there that, that, um, is the wall of the commons and, and that arcade below. And what that might look like from the street is something like this. Again, um, even though there's three stories over here, that this curving wall and the vertical glass of the commons area. And, and, um, this, what might be a stair tower, um, by the front entrance becomes the focal point. That you can see it from Webster Street. And, and you know, the rest of the building gets downplayed. One of the other advantages, um, to the, to the building in this location in either option, by the way, from a, uh, economy point of view. Is that as, as architects, we, we want to spend a little bit of money on the front entrance. But the other three sides of the building could be relatively vanilla, uh, uh, economical, you know, durable, good, you know. Long, long, long lasting materials, but we don't have to spend a lot of, you, you know, um, uh, sort of architectural emphasis on those other three sides. Only the deer and the, you know, and the squirrels in the woods are seeing it from that side really. It, it's not very visible, so it, it, it can help in the overall economy of, of the building. So, um, so that's what we wanted to cover tonight. Um, and I know that, that there were a couple of slides here that, uh, Jen wanted to touch on. Whoops, where did we go today? No, not those.
I had a thought about the rendition that has the curved side at the front. And it's got a three story glass. And I think it's very clear how you get into the building. Just by looking at it, you're just kind of here, you're looking at it, it's curved, it's got this thing and there's doors right there.
Roger, you're right there.
Yeah, if you look at the other illustration that, um, has the two tiers or, you know, uh, uh, like two point O, one of nine hundred students. There's two glass towers, um, which, you know, I guess you could go to the lo- the one that has the most glass as, uh, how to get in. But, um, it just, I think it's a little more quizzing to the eye with that curved facade at the front. I really think that's sharp. That's just my opinion.
We, we envision that as, as perhaps being something like metal panel as opposed to the main screen. That the rest of the building might be masonry or some kind of, um, you know, more utilitarian kind of material. The front might be, um, in- insulated metal panel, which is kind of, you know, it's a little slicker, um, technical. It's kind of.
Architectural.
Uh, it's kind of, it's kind of appropriate for a technical school.
Yeah.
Um, more than just the brick building would at last any high school, because it, it won't rust. It's aluminum usually or coated steel.
Got it. Yeah, I like that.
While Jen's just getting ready to transition, I have a couple of, a couple of quick thoughts. So then the, the homework assignment of the committee is going to be to take in the revised site designs. Which will be given in advance of the fourteenth. There's also some, and Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, there's also an interest for you to get feedback on the fourteenth about the, the unified entrance. So we don't have to choose between two point O and two point one. Both of those designs are moving forward to the estimators. But you would like some feedback as to whether or not there's an appetite to have two point O and two point one with.
With the unified entrance. We'd like to decide that tonight if we could, if, if that seemed appropriate, um, as, as a way to proceed. Um, because that affects, it has a, it has a domino effect elsewhere in the layout of the building. It's not just the entrance. It does affect, obviously where the common, current, cosmetology are located and, and some other things have to switch, so.
And then the other question in general, Mr. Chair, would be, while we would have another meeting on the fourteenth of December. If the building committee wanted to have it without the project team, just if, if the building committee wanted to continue a group conversation. Uh, we could certainly follow through. I have reached out to you about a possible meeting for next week. But if we had the, the, if we had the conversation tonight and we just want to enter the, our own processing mode, once we get some revised site plan. There's not a reason to meet next week. So if, if the appetite of the committee, you, you don't have to make that decision tonight. I can work with the chair on that. So we could end, after Jen's presentation, we can wrap up. We will resume on the fourteenth. But if there's an appetite for more discussion, we could, we could certainly talk about that as well. I just wanted to raise those two points about what's our, what's our homework and, uh, and then.
And it seemed just to be presumptuous here, I guess, that the unified entrance seemed to be a positive.
Yes.
Thing with both, so that's, that's the way we'll proceed.
Everybody agree on the unified?
No, no. It works for either one.
Just a nod for a unified entrance with both designs still on the table.
Right, right.
We need a motion on that.
We, we.
Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion? Thank you, George. Perhaps a second fight.
All right.
Tom was in favor of it.
Okay. By Rockland, any discussion going in?
Anybody? Bob Melo, you have anything to say?
Nope, thank you.
Keith?
Nope, nothing to say.
Okay. All right, um, we have a motion in the second on, on a unified entrance designed for both. I'll do a roll call. Bob, hey, with the chair. Tom, Hickey?
Yes.
Keith Boyle?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yeah.
Jack Manny's not on, is he?
No.
Bob Melo?
Yes.
Frank, Frank Moll, did you get on? No. John Petrocelli, yes. Dustin?
Yes.
And Dan Wuchy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. You're on again.
Right. Up to you back to me. Fantastic. Uh, so tonight, uh, we are starting the conversation about construction management at risk approach. For, um, for a construction delivery method or a design bid build, uh, delivered. Familiar with either or both approaches? Well, you, hopefully you will be, I've said it presently. So the, um, so in two thousand and five, uh, chapter one ninety three of the acts resolved in two thousand and four. Um, allowed for the provisions of, uh, one forty nine A. Uh, I won't read that whole thing to you, created in my old time, it's a play. Uh, but that is the law that allows us to, uh, pursue either approach for our project. So, uh, as an overview, the design bid build approach is kind of more the, uh, traditional, uh, type of delivery method. Uh, that most folks are probably, um, familiar with. It's, uh, where. Uh, that most folks are probably uh familiar with, it's uh where the. Architects and engineers, they'll develop a full set of plans and specifications, and then. You put those out to bid, uh, and then you get the lowest uh response of bidder, uh, you have to select them. So that's designed-to-build, uh, like we said, more traditional approach. Uh, and just for clarification, D R A and Leftfield have experience doing both, um, so. And so the construction manager at risk allows the team to bring on a a construction manager or C M or C M R. Uh, during the design process. So they would be able to participate and be more collaborative in the design process and the budgeting and the scheduling. And uh, they would kind of be more of a team player as we moved through the design process. Uh, so we'll get into a little bit of the um, the overall comparison and then specific advantages, advantages without cost, schedule and. Um, and all those impacts as well, so this is just really meant as kind of an overview and then. On the, on the uh December fourteenth meeting, uh, we could, you know, wrap up questions and discussion and hopefully come to a decision then. If you don't feel like making a decision at that point, uh, we can still push it to uh early January, that's still fine for. So, starting with the comparison, uh, the designed-to-build, I'm gonna call D B B and C M at Risk, I'm gonna call C M R. Easier. So, D B B is the, the design and construction stage is completely substantial. So, uh, linear, in a more linear fashion, scheduling-wise. The C M at Risk gives you the opportunity to uh kind of overlap the design and construction phases. You're able to to do some early package work uh while things are still being designed, so you could do, um. Given, if if this is a new building, we would be building on the site. We could do some small uh early package uh work to prep the site. In advance of starting full construction, and we could do that before the rest of the drawings are uh folded big, so we could do some, um. For instance, the uh wastewater plant, maybe you can connect some utilities and and do things like that to prep for construction. And that uh generally allows some uh, allows you to accelerate the schedule a bit. So, that's the difference in schedule, um. The D B B is the lump sum bid, um, it's a budget based on completed design. Whereas the uh C M R is really, um, you just develop the costs collaboratively. So the group, um, we're constantly looking with uh O P M, architect and C M R at the top. They're involved in every uh estimate uh that we we do along the way. Um, so really, you can have a, uh. And they use their actual, they go to actual trade contractor costs that they have. Uh, to to pull those numbers from, process bidders. Uh, don't go directly to the the trades to uh to understand the costs where they stand. So, you do get a better look at budget uh with the the C M R on during designs. Uh, the general contractor or C D B B uh would still be pre-qualified uh for uh bidding. Whereas uh they, and then they would submit a bid and you have to select the lowest bid uh that comes in, uh, once you're pre-qualified both. Um, whereas C M R, you are, you select them based on their qualification and fee. So you're able to have uh interviews with the groups and really get to know uh the teams before making a decision. Uh, you do have to rank them based on those qualifications before you open their uh fee proposals. Uh, but then you get to rank the the fee proposals and then decide uh. On which you select, so it does give you a little more possibility in the selection of a contractor. Uh, the uh, see, getting to a contractor, a contract, the owner would execute a lump sum contract. With the contractor in a, in a D B B situation. Whereas a C M R situation allows the owner um and O P M to negotiate a guaranteed maximum price. To the cost plus next to the contract. Uh, so you have a little more, um, a little more control uh over that, you also get to look. Uh, you see the backup for C M R, um, they they give you the line items for everything. Uh, whereas the designed-to-build, the lump sum, that's, that's the amount you see, um. Uh, and then, uh, again, the bid packages, typically for a signed-to-build, you'd have one bid package. Uh, you could bid a separate site prep package, uh, you, you do, there there's a likelihood that you wind up with. Uh, a separate contractor, you have two different contractors, one doing the site prep, one doing uh the rest of the building. Uh, and the C M R, you're able to do those multiple bid packages. Uh, with that same per, um. And. Uh, D B B, uh, you generally see uh more of a competitive process, it's not really a collaborative process. As a team is typically what it's been seen. Um, whereas the the C M R, you have more collaborative process because you you built the time together of the team coming here. Building the the, the design and budget and schedule and logistics, really working together as a, as a team. So you do really have a, on a less adversarial relationship, um, is what we found. Uh, in D B B, all changes result in change orders, um, whereas with C M R. You uh, you're able to build in uh allowances and and things that that and line items that are drawn down. From in the G M P, our guaranteed maximum price contract. You you can, you could have changes within their contract that we track, because you see the backup, um, that we do see those line items that are able to, um. Identify those, you know, those potential items and issues, um, ahead of time with them, because they've been looking at the drawings and. Uh, things ahead of time. Uh, for a designed-to-build, um, initial cost for the project will come in lower. Typically, you do see the initial cost come in five percent lower than you would with a a C M R, um. Because you are paying, for C M R, you're paying for them during construction, I mean, during um design, uh, so. It it does, the initial cost is higher. And I have those, I don't know, just a second. Uh, but with the C M R, the ability to accelerate schedule, um, and the ability to build changes into the contract. Uh, really results in a comparable end price for the project, um. The D B B, uh, the risk uh equals higher cost, if there are any risks, um. This, the contractor, those risks and and the potential for those risks are unknown to the contractor when they're, when they're bidding. So they're going to put more money uh towards those costs. Um, whereas the C M R, you're able to manage uh that risk because it's identified earlier in the process by them, by us, um. And then again, some of that risk can be incorporated into the G M P, um, as allowances to allow you to, uh. To manage that within their contract. Uh, the uh, on the D B B side, a longer schedule, it first equals higher cost. Uh, whereas the C M R, because they're on and and they're helping us build the schedule, um, and. They will, they have common goals of of managing to the schedule that that we want. Uh, the uh. Uh, there is, in the D B B, there's no ability to uh select or negotiate the um non-filed subbid subcontractors. Uh, whereas with C M R, uh, you, you, we get to be part of um negotiating with the C M. See who they are selecting for the, the non-filed subbid, um, subcontractors. So we get, we should have a little more say, um, in in who comes on and and the price and that. And what that process looks like. Designed-to-builds, uh, bit savings, uh, which. Wouldn't necessarily see what those bit savings are, but they all go back to uh the the general contractor.
Can I make a comment? On uh signed-to-build, on to to the fourth bullet, this, you know, general contract with the lowest bid is selected. Uh, general contract with the lowest qualified.
Right, qualified and responsive.
Because I went into, been a selectman, I went into building projects where I failed. Like not happy with it, I failed.
So that's a part of the prequal, there is a prequalification process, so you. They, uh, the first step would be they submit uh their qualifications, and then we as a team review the those qualifications. Um, and there's a a clear rubric in the R and Q, um. And you can determine if they are qualified or not qualified, and then, um, then you ask, you invite those, the rest of those qualified folks to bid the project. Um, and then the lowest responsive bid is the one that you have to go with, so, uh, so also. If somebody submitted a qualified bidder submits something that they've lost, they've missed an important piece of information or something like that. Um, you would move on to the second lowest, um, bidder at that point.
What do you do about quality control and is it an incentive to get the job done sooner? Ever employed?
For either both or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, if if you rush the job, the quality can go horribly, um, and. So the Q C is really important, but it would be also perhaps an incentive to do a good job and do it quickly.
Yep.
Um, which might make it cheaper or some savings.
Right, right.
So how do you, how do you wrestle with all of that?
Um, wrestling, right, right, so, uh, so the O P M, um, so in a uh C M at Risk uh situation. Uh, we're constantly uh managing what they're doing and giving to us, they're, they provide a monthly report. Both would provide a monthly report to us that have the, uh, what they've done, the C M at Risk has more budget information. Um, and then, um, we also, uh. So, the C M at Risk, while they're like involved in the uh design process, then they, um. They also do like constructibility reviews, and we do constructibility reviews, um. And there's a lot of comments on the design, so they're looking for quality control issues that could be problems, um, part of managing the risk. Um, design bid build, um, really, it's really from construction on. We have someone, uh, site rep that is on-site every day of construction. Um, and yeah, and they're, they're constantly checking work and things like that, um, and, um.
Would they check everything, like plumbing, electrical, insulation?
Yeah.
And foundation?
Yeah, yep, yes, and, um, and then we also do have, um, an M E P person that, um. Uh, Carlos Montendez, who is, uh, who's actually been involved in some of the design meetings today, um, and he'll be more involved with coordination with everyone. Um, and then at the end, uh, he's on-site when there are M E P items that are installed, um, very thorough. Um, and he will uh review against the documents, make sure that things are how they're supposed to be. Um, or somehow at that point, something got missed in the documents, you know, that'll be flagged as well. Um, so, uh, Car- and Carlos will stay on, um, as things are commissioned out for the fact as well. And if there's any training needs that need to be done, um, we we help assist with that as well. Hope that answers. And there's commission, and there's a commissioning agent, um, that that is provided through the M E P, um, as a, as a third party.
You may not be the right person to ask this, but if you have a steel girder that holds up the second floor and it's. Sixty feet long, and you've got to get the thing from wherever the heck it was bought to here. The logistics of that, who who's involved with that?
That uh is, um, so, con- construction manager, that would be construction manager, the agency to to ensure that those things are coming on time. We do have weekly meetings with everyone to make sure that that we're tracking what's supposed to be on-site, what's coming in on-site, what, you know. Um, long lead items, um.
Cement.
So, you say cement?
Cement.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, exactly, um, so, and for for things like cement, we have a third-party testing agency that comes in the slump tests and.
Yeah.
All that stuff, um, and, you know, everyone's talking temperatures of trucks and and timing, you know, there's, yeah, there's a ton of documentation, uh. Our on-site rep does a daily report, which you'll have access to, uh, and it's very thorough, um. It it just documents everything that happens, everyone that's on-site, um. And you'll, like I said, you'll have access to those, you put those in the monthly report too. Uh, monthly report will get uh thicker and thicker as we move through the process, um, but. Uh, yes, so there is a process and we we're heavily involved.
No, it's not a question, just a, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this will be under controlled construction, so the engineers and challenges, no building, no local building inspectors on this. This will be all controlled construction by the engineers. Okay, so everything that comes in will be monitored by the general contractor. Or likely will be making sure that subcontractors, the steel workers, the concrete workers, the freighters and whatever else. That's all goes through that one guy and through the committee. But it doesn't get inspected by the, you know, the building department.
Yeah.
It gets inspected by the engineers that have to sign up on it, that are called controlled construction.
Sure, being, being in a cap, we do the construction first. Um, I do the construction analysis, are we hiring a consulting firm that will then hire the people to build the building? Or are they the people that will build the building?
Uh, so, they have, um, typically, if the C M R will have some trades that they manage. Um, they'll have like laborers and things like that, and then they wind up hiring, um, under them subcontractors. Uh, and there's really two, um, two buckets of subcontractors, there's filed subbid. Uh, contractors, which are, there's eighteen different categories and you have this whole public process, which is. You've got pre-qualified, a whole bunch of uh contractors, and then you do wind up getting a low bidder, and that's about half the, usually about half the contract price. Uh, the other half is, um, that's where we have more control, uh, that's where the C M R will be, uh. They provide bidding documents, they're in, they're in communication, um, with those, um, bidders about what's in the documents. Make sure everyone's carrying the same thing, making the same assumptions, um, and then, uh. There's a bidding process that we get to be involved in, they still, um, you know, there's. There's rules and things they have to follow on that, their end of bidding, of course, but, um, but we do get to be more involved in that process. And that tells the result, that's about fifty percent approximately, um, of the the contract of amount of the uh the trades. So, uh.
And the process, who, who bids the other fifty percent, who bid that and who didn't?
They did that.
So, they have a price, that price is included in what they're, they think they're gonna pay all of their subcontractors.
Yes, yes.
So we have, we'll have to do both cases, just you can set out one bid. Or still have just one contract.
Right.
Whether it's with a general contractor or with a construction manager, as the owner yourself, there's one.
Designed-to-build, you have to take the lowest qualified, but we get to interview the the C M Rs and pick what we like.
Right, right.
What person's asking? Of new buildings? Which one? About fifty percent, is it fifty percent figure, or is it forty, sixty?
Question on which goes which way.
Which way people are going on this?
Let's staple things on right now, I will say that, uh, the trend we've been seeing lately has been going towards, um, towards uh C M at Risk because of. Long lead items, specifically, um, there's a few things that have, we run into on our projects, um. Electrical switchgear is running eighty weeks right now, which is crazy. So it's, um, you know, so it is, um, easier when the long lead of items are, um. You know they're a long lead items, the C M R is communicating to you beforehand about those items. Um, and they're able to, we can, if we release them, uh, to procure those items ahead of, um, you know, the bids. Um, otherwise, in a designed-to-build situation, the owner would have to, uh, if you wanted to have things on-site on time. The owner would have to purchase those things in advance, um, as opposed to the C M R.
There is also the issue of bonding capacity.
Right.
For, um, regardless of all the other advantages and disadvantages, if a general contractor is limited in how much he can. Um, bid on, and a lot of these projects are above that limit now, so they automatically go to the construction managers.
That's fine.
Um, that that's swinging the 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 balance, uh, if you want to call it that, to a great extent.
And we have seen, though, we have seen, uh, a couple of the large C M at Risk firms. Uh, entering the designed-to-build, uh, or doing a low bid, um, situation, so, you know, those bigger C M R firms. That can 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 bond a project like the one. So you know, those bigger CMR firms that can, can, can bond a project like the one, like this one. Um, they would do a design bid build. So you do, you would get, there would be still a pool of contractors available, the DVB. Um, it would just be the larger firms.
Is everything prevailing wage?
Yes, yes.
Everything regardless, regardless of what. So it's a minute of them managing the time, they think they can get it done themselves.
You got to do it right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I have to recall what it was gonna happen.
Sorry, George. Sorry.
I'll be here for a little while.
Yeah.
Does, is either one, does, does the construction manager, we'd have to put it in, that delay the process at all, or is all done?
Sorry, yeah.
So we sent out the bid on the design bid bill, we sent out the bill, we opened bid, qualify one contract versus, construction manager, you can send out a bid, you get risk, you know, applications. Now, we as a committee would interview some people, is that the way?
You do that much earlier than the process.
So what we would uh suggest, if you do go uh CM at risk, we've been typically bringing them on during feasibility study, um, to inform the uh logistics, uh, the schedule and most, most importantly, at this stage, the budget. Um, so they would provide a cost estimate uh at the end of SD. So um, you could have two or three uh cost estimators, um, uh, run those numbers at the end of schematic design for more of a cost to churn before you have to submit all of that financial information to the MSBA. Uh, because once, once that is set to the MSBA, that is your budget, that's what you have to live with. Um, and that is what they, you know, agree on uh grants for. Um, so we wouldn't be willing to bring them on. Uh, hopefully this spring, if you were, uh, if you did decide to go CM at risk, so that whole process would play out, um, while we're still in this phase.
And, and Jim's question, Jim, how does that work, bringing on someone early relative to our feasibility budget?
Glad you asked, Tom. Uh, we are actually, I, I, I don't have that slide, I'm going to have that slide next time. Um, but I, I did look, I did look, um, and we actually have, uh, we have over, um, over five hundred thousand still unbidded. Um, there is numbers that have come in low enough where we're still working within the uh original amount that was allotted for their budget plan item. Um, so we are in good shape, we typically see, I would say, for an estimate and logistics and scheduling, we would probably be somewhere under seventy-five thousand for that. Um, maybe even less if we're just asking for a estimate and um, and uh, let's just say it's. So during our phase, we should, we would have the funds to do that.
Okay, thank you. It, it came back to me. Um, when all of this is gonna come together, which of the two, the DVB or the CMR, what's the, an easier sell to my town? You know, I mean, obviously there have been construction projects in everybody's town and they've gone with, I guess, one or the other, history, historically speaking. So is there a trend that, you know, the town is gonna look at this and go, wow, I, this isn't that much more acceptable? Because we've decided to go with X or Y.
Right, right, uh, so, let's see if I've got this slide done. Not that, not that cost is going to be, I mean, driver here, but.
Best suited for, best suited for.
Yeah, so uh, exactly. So uh, on this advantages slide here, uh, so design bid build is best suited, if you type the bold on the bottom of these slides, best suited for a less complicated project that is, uh, that is budget sensitive, but not schedule sensitive and not subject to change. Um, the CM at risk is best suited for projects that are time-sensitive, uh, challenging to define or subject to potential changes, there are some unknowns or, or challenges that you need to work through. Um, projects that are, require high construction oversight due to site logistics, um, and phasing of, of, of the project, um, and having multiple stakeholders. Um, so from our standpoint, um, and you can chime in too, like, uh, I think the logistics of this plot project alone and having an occupied building that needs to stay, there's just so much going on on this site that needs to remain functioning, um, so close to the, the construction. Um, you're in a neighborhood, there's a lot of things to be careful of if you're a butters. Um, there's the, the ability, if you do go CM at risk, um, to do some of that, um, prep work ahead of time. Um, like with the waste water management plant, um, and connecting those. And there's, there's a, I think, a lot of, um, benefit if I'm CM at risk for this particular project. That's not always the case if this was a project where you were building in a green field that didn't have any wetlands and, you know, uh, maybe it was in the middle of nowhere and you could have complete construction access. Um, that would be a good case for a design bid build. Um, with the fact that prices are also, um, still, you know, they're still pretty volatile. Um, there's still things happening, um. It's, it's better to kind of, if you can shorten your schedule, um, with like CM at, at risk, you could start construction earlier and, um, finish in a shorter amount of time. Um, and that should save you money, um, being able to just manage the budget with them is, we found very huge benefit to all of the projects that are CM at risk. Um, and again, like, you get to, you as a committee, you get to know them because they're at the table at every one of the meetings. Um, so it, it really, it depends on, on what's important, uh, to the project. But um, from, I think where we're sitting, the CM at risk would be a benefit to this particular project.
I don't know that, that our experience, um, suggests that the voters are sophisticated enough to know the difference between these two, that it would make a difference, I think, George, unless you've gone through a project very recently. Yeah, um, it, it'd be hard, you know, maybe Whitman, having just done a middle school project? voters might, might have some, might have some, no, I don't think you know. Right, right.
Yeah.
So I don't know that it makes a difference in terms of the, the political support for the project.
Okay. The one other one I had was, um, this is such a goldmine for the trades that are teaching it in the school. Um, I know everything's a hard add area and there's probably insurance.
Mm-hmm.
But possibilities, it could be very challenging just to be polite about it. Um, any chance of our students learning a trick or two or something along the way?
Absolutely.
Put chairs outside, like a boy.
Yeah.
But I, I would say, um, with a CM at risk, because of the involvement in the design process as well, um, and the more, um, the more hands-on experience you'll have with the, the CM at risk as well, they would be more likely to try to involve your students. Um, I've seen CM at risks on other projects, uh, even elementary schools, you give cores and things like that and try to get people excited or during the design phase, uh, they'll come in and try to, you know, walk, walk folks through how to read a blueprint or something at a school level. But um, obviously, your, your students will be a little more advanced than that. But um, I do feel like a CM at risk would give you more opportunity for that.
Is there anything like a styrofoam mockup or a model of the, what the thing's gonna look like? It's out in the front lobby, anything like that ever?
They do build mockups, they'll have, right, there can be a, a mockup, or there can be.
That would be our responsibility more than the, the construction managers.
But during construction, there is a mockup.
Asking the wrong question to. For that reason, but yeah, just, you know, of course you can do it online, but it's, it's really kind of cool to have something right in front of you.
Yeah, yeah, and during construction, typically there is a, a mockup of some part portion of the building so that the trades can work through the connections and, um, and things like that.
Yeah.
And folks can see, um, what the material is gonna look like, you know, in the light of day.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. On the, either one of these, you do set a date. Say building, building by, uh, two thousand seventeen, whatever it is, June, we want to open up in September. And if there's the waves and that, is there any fines?
For, for liquidated amidance generally?
Yeah.
Uh, which it can quantify in advance?
But some of that is taken twelve too. Like, they did subcontractors on it near when they said they were supposed to.
The, the general contractor could allocate the penalty to the subcontractors if it's their fault. That's their purview.
Whatever.
Yes, you have recourse as an owner, get to, you know, enforce that date.
Well, that's because it's interest now, you said.
Oh, yeah.
And then, um, with a CM at risk, because they are, um, they're quali- qualification-based. Um, so we're calling references, so they want to make sure that they are meeting typically. Exactly, they're, they're only as good as their last job. Uh, so really, they do push this, their subs. Uh, and if they need to accelerate, uh, but we've had on the projects where they're working six, eight weeks, if we're out there, it's a state of the week.
But it's always that last ten percent that they never get the commission. To get the mirror. A general religious example, what are you looking for in this decision?
Uh, I hope by, by early January, if possible, um, that would give us a time to.
It does affect our cost estimating slightly. It, it's not a big factor, but it's, literally, we can, our estimators would, would have a, a factor in the bottom line. Sort of, they, they have a breakdown of the direct costs, you know, the steel and brick and mortar and concrete. And then there's the overhead costs for general requirements and insurance and things. They, they, i- i- if you were going CM, there, there are pre-construction services. And uh, and there are these allowances and holds that sort of make up for, um, the, the production and change orders. So it does affect their bottom line. So that's why we want to know early in January, uh, which way the, the district would like to go.
And we'll say, no, sorry, is it the last, um, last set of cost of estimates assumed CM at risk because there is a little bit more of an upfront cost? So those costs were included in the PDB estimates.
I think we could add a decision. Sure, yeah, just wanted a comment, I didn't really want to put it out here a little bit. Um, with, with it went through a very similar proposals, you know, with the color. Presentations, sorry. Um, and, and basically it came down to, uh, looking at two things. Uh, the first, right up there where it says, what are the best suitable? Uh, CMR is best suited for time-sensitive, you know, something that has to be done by our schedule. Well, that's technically not the case, we were the bill and it's technically not the case. You want to get it done as soon as we can, because you don't want it to get drawn out. But, um, and then secondly, um, projects that are budget-sensitive, projects that are requiring high construction oversight, you know, logistics phases. You look at with the middle schools, very similar, honestly, to what you do here. Um, you're taking a plot plan, you're building a brand new building. Everybody is still in the school, getting this for work done. Uh, and the school up back is, or let's keep it up front, uh, is finished, everybody moves in and then you get down to the system script. Um, there's a lot of complexities there, but it's not like some schools where there's building new buildings on top of and expanding and new and all that stuff. So Whitman looked at it at that, and then it basically came down to who owns the risk? Okay, so risk costs money, or if, risk is risk. So risk for you guys is a potential to cost money. Risk for the CMR is, okay, make sure I'm covered. So we look at it as the fact that it's gonna be more expensive for, when we go to vote with the CMR, most likely than it's gonna be if we went with the design bid bill. So Whitman went with the design bid build just because we were willing to take the risk to take, to, to get that budget vote at easier selling point for that.
It's kind of what I was getting.
You get eight towns, you're gonna sell it to eight towns.
Yes.
Um, nine, in nine, by, well, eight by January twenty-five, right? Marchville won't be voted.
And they just had joined the previous summer.
Yeah, Marchville is so not, so there's a lot there, you know, I mean, and, and we were just one town. Maybe still only had sixteen percent of the vote. It was disgusting, honestly. So, but, you know, it, it's gonna be all about the budget and, and, you know, I, I'm just telling you where from, you guys have different, different people and all that. So you, you want to lean on what they recommend, um, and what they're comfortable with, but that's.
Yeah, sure. Just real quick. Uh, I've lived through this. Um, I was a student in Moell, uh, middle school when they assigned a building. Back then, it was pre-two thousand and four, so it was designed. I am still new to this whole process and you guys have done a great job, it's like. Uh, if, I, I guess, from where I'm sitting, if your recommendation would be to go with CMR, I think that everybody's committee should strongly look at that. Having gone through design bid build and knowing the delay is what it's supposed to have in school two years prior to when we actually are in it. We, no one ever told us anything, once it was built, about once it already did. We got a contractor, it took forever, and this was again, back in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, in two thousand, actually it was two thousand one, excuse me. Uh, but it was two thousand one, and so things were a little bit different back then, I understand that. But if things were that bad then, I can only imagine that they haven't gotten much better. If this is a new way that we can do things, I understand the idea of selling it to our towns. I, I, in the same boat as Gohassel, trust me, I, I get it. But if this is gonna be the way that the industry is building, and it's gonna be better for the product as a whole, I think we really need to consider that.
All right, did you have a, a quick slide up?
Okay.
Has cost to come up? Best lies, um, so cost differentiators, um, the CMR costs, um, include, uh, as we talked about, change contingencies and allowances within the GMP. Um, and design to build is not. Um, so this generally at the end of a project results in, uh, to increase, uh, three, three percent of the cost difference at the end of the day. Um, CMR has pre-construction costs for their involvement during design, which helps ensure that the, uh, construction budget is accurate and maintained. But of course, those find out as upfront costs and others are saying. Um, and that the schedule acceleration to offset higher upfront costs. Um, and, and as, uh, Dustin, Dustin was saying, um, uh, your, your students are here for four years. Um, that's the, I think, the need to accelerate the schedule in this case is just, you don't want them to have to live through the construction of a new school for the whole time they're here necessarily. Um, that is for a chart here. So this, this chart kind of shows, um, this, uh, it shows that the, uh, cost growth over the, the cost of, over the, um, the length of a project um, with CMR versus design bid build. Uh, I believe this study, one slide at some point, it said the study was based on three hundred and fifty projects that, uh, that research was done by, uh, Construction Industry Institute. Um, some other, other groups. Um, schedule growth, as you can see here, um, increased significantly with design bid build. Um, and did not increase with a CM at risk. Um, just some things to consider, um, make sure that the rest of these slides are for next meeting. And I will have a little more information about our R and Q billion project and things like that.
Here, I just say, I, that, Jen, that, that would be helpful if, if, if a, if a committee is considering the, the benefits and the disadvantages of CMR, it means that somewhere in the mix, there's gonna be a higher price tag with CMR when we push this out to our communities. Uh, as, as John, John was saying, so where, where is the risk? Is, is it absorbing the risk and watching to see whether there's schedule growth? You're saying schedule growth means it's a longer timeframe and thus it's a cost escalator downstream? Is that what that?
Yes.
Chart is a technical thing. So you could, you could give us a little more information on, on those impacts?
There's typically more change orders.
More change, more change orders.
There will be change orders in the CMR as well. So they're generally more limited because they're taking the construction contingency, maybe not at the beginning of the job, but towards the end of the job, and they'll be applying changes to, to those contingencies, because they don't actually really, really have to say, own that money? That would, any, anything that's left with construction contingency would come back to you.
is is a, will come back to you right then.
If you've got one way of doing it or the other, and if one of them has uh upfront costs, is that actually a savings? Because you're buying the thing early as opposed to later? Just because, you know, you're buying at today's price, it's great. Is does that come into play at all?
Yes, uh especially with those long lead items. Um long lead of items and other things that you see escalating in price. Um the CM at risks, all the ones that we've all worked with, um they usually have a good pulse on the market and um and have market reports that come out and things like that. Um it also has, um it it's really based on a trade by trade situation, so um they're, they can identify um certain, certain trades have higher escalation of, you know, than others at times. Um back in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, when there was a huge spike, it didn't hit all trades evenly. Um and so we were able to see what some of those um those trades were, so if if we saw that coming down the line um to buy something earlier.
Yeah. It had a. Of course, behind you.
But I I know, I know. Yeah, just want to make sure the committee, you know, ease of gas and public comment on that.
Oh, that's all right. Um if that question just brought up something that I've considered with the CMR. Um will MSBA reimburse CMR prior to schematic design approval and vote over the town? So will the reimbursement process start before that happens?
On there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good points, Jen.
Anything else?
One question, sure, like just, I know that when you gave us a real cost assessment, there was a ton of contingencies all over the place. As Jen just said, so if, under both situations, the buildings are built and is, out of all the contingencies built into the project, there's a five million dollars. Under the design bill bill, under the design bill, the contract is at five million, but under the CM, CMR, we keep. That pretty much it? Yeah.
And you would never know that there was.
And it did that cost for something else.
Yep. All right, thanks. We hit all set. Cross this bridge again on the fourteen.
Or board one.
Or board one or round. I don't know, whatever. Pete, you got anything?
Yes.
No, nothing from me.
Okay, buddy. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn. Well, have you got anything?
May not stop you on.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
Second by Rockland. All, any discussion on that? I'll take it. Um we'll get to the right page, just like I said. Tom Hickey?
Yes.
Keith Boyle.
Yes.
George Cooper?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Bob Mello? John. Tom Petroselli?
Yes.
Dustin Reed?
Yes.
Dan Salwaja?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.